I have to say, we've been really at last five four years working together and all came about the last minute. We wanted to make sure that people have a chance to meet and hear from the candidates before the deadline for registration.
It's good to see you here.
Really, I am proud of you. You're keeping it just, I mean, I gotta tell you, I really, I can see, I can see you've been doing really well.
Let's hear it for Bob Erst. He's been extremely helpful. Also Cory Hardin is not here tonight, but she has been amazing, also helping, so let's give Cory a round of love. And we'd like to thank Rob Paul, Peter Redditch from Recycle Hawaii, for powering me to participate. We have all the candidates back. If we're looking for Daniel, Daniel will be back soon. Who else could we thanks here? Nelson Ho, Jonathan for being here, and also La Akeia, Carvalho, and Kanani Fraser for inviting Julia. Hey, Leilani. I really do appreciate it. We wanted it to be an environmental forum and, you know, getting to some of the experiences that I've had here. I've had many, many wonderful experiences, and so many things from the Hawaiian culture. And one of the things that I learned is it would not be appropriate for us to be here without having a representative from the wine community. So I thank you so very much for coming. Okay, and, okay, Daniel's back, so we're gonna start again. I am up next. Would you support a ban on the use of styrofoam for food service purposes? So, does anybody need any clarification about that question? A ban on styrofoam. So across the United States and actually other places around the world, there are municipalities who are just straight up banning styrofoam. And to give you a little bit of background on it, I do a lot of zero waste events, and styrofoam sucks. I mean, when you get that styrofoam, especially when you get it right up next to that chili, and that red fat stuff soaks into the styrofoam, forget it, you know, you can't really do much with it. But if you just get it out of the waste stream and you use compostables, there's a huge component of what's in the waste stream that's automatically compostable. You don't have to worry about doing anything else with it. So would you support a ban on styrofoam for those purposes, for service?
So I guess we're gonna go yes or no in a few words? Okay, we're starting.
Yes, I believe my shipment is done a long time ago. I have some good friends who put in the plastic bag movement, and I'm so glad that that got passed. And sometimes you get frustrated because you get too warm and you don't have a bag, they're sitting in your car. But the fact is that the landfills have reduced by eight percent already in less than, in less than six months because of plastic bags. So I just wanna encourage you guys then, you know, continue the good work. Thank you.
Yeah, and the way I would try to look at it is polluters pay principle. And that is that if we can't ban it totally, then there should be some kind of, I hate to say it, but, you know, like a tax or something that, that they have to pay. But basically, it breaks down to, hey, no, I mean, yeah, okay.
And the same way, it's gotta go. Not only that, we don't stop there. The clear plastics as well, that's gotta go too.
That's the easy one, styrofoam, yeah, no. You know, it was kinda funny, but we're maybe, we were way ahead of the United States in terms of pollution. I just hope we can follow that type of, getting rid of the stuff.
Yes, on the ban, yes. It's gonna hurt small businesses, I know. Some of them are, you know, not really ready for this ban, but yes, definitely ban.
Absolutely, we need to ban the styrofoam containers for food products. But I've been wondering for 20 years, I've lived here, 26 years I've lived here, why not styrofoam ice chest? Visitors come here, they use it one or two times, and it's tossed in the landfill. You eliminate that completely, you create a whole big industry of renting ice chest? And all of a sudden, there you go, people rent a per week their hair, and send them back with a deposit. I agree with something Mr. Pelleja said, and that Germany is way ahead of us, in the solar industry as well. And I hope someday we can say we're way ahead of the world in solar industry.
My first step on this is, I was looking into, just like your necklace, find ideas, bring it out to the community. Because Puna, the thing about Puna is that they're step first, experience diverse perspective, and there's diverse education that everybody has. And I wanna put out there a reward, who would come up with an idea to recycle this. First, I would try to find that out, and then hear what everybody has to say, and then I would see, explore the possibility for that.
I'm in favor of, yes, however, that's a very, very expensive law to, to implement unless you have a free economy drawing him that replaces all the products.
So, let's get going on that styrofoam ban. You have an opportunity to do it in this council term. You're actually considering it. Why does a law have to come up with it first? Why don't we leave in something?
Yes, I agree, but I'm wondering, the reason why we started plastics in the first place was because we were cutting down trees. Now we're gonna go back to cutting trees? There's technology where we can use him. Let's start doing it now instead of two, three, four years. If we're gonna take something away from us, that we're trying to save trees or something, then let's put something that we're not killing our forest.
Trying to do yes and no. We were just recently informed that the county has commenced to use Google Earth to check on those people who are getting ag exemptions for their land. Would you support the county using that same technology to prevent illegal rubbing and grading? And the follow-up to that is increasing the penalties significantly for that illegal rubbing and grading.
I would work hard to educate people about grumming and pin-to-pin. I would like to work on changing what the insurance companies require people to do in order to get insurance in building their houses. And so it's important that I, I would really work on something like that, but there's reasons why people are doing it, and maybe that's what we have to look at too, is the reasons. But yeah, I'm, I'm fully into working on that one.
This is, this is a hard one for me, because it touches on, on our privacy. We, we need to stop the grumming and what's going, that's destroying our land, but on the other hand, do we invade somebody's privacy? So I would have to say that we have to look at other needs to find out who's destroying our land, rather than going to Google or the world. Thank you.
Very, very fancy, there's a common sense of Google. They can't be using our technology. We never ask if somebody be watching us, if someone is illegally grumming or not. If they are, then they, they should be held accountable. But, you know, the way the law is, you can do so much on your property without penalty. But if they're gonna use, the question was if they can use the technology.
They can use Google.
They can use Google, I don't agree with that.
Well, right now, we don't need Google. It's happening right here in our town. And they have been reported, I understand, and are they gonna get penalized, which they should?
Okay, they just, they suck up the fine and go on.
And I totally agree. They should up the fine, yeah, make it so that they won't be doing it. Thank you.
Actually, I am for using the technology to protect the land and against overgrumming. And I'm also in, in favor of increasing the fine. There's a thing called the common, so it's the area that we all share. And this idea that because I own this piece of land, it's designated by the plat map, and I can do whatever I want on it, that is not really real. We need to honor the neighborhood, we need to honor the aina, we need to honor every aspect of this island, and all the islands. So absolutely, I would enforce those, and I think it'd be a good thing. I think people need to be taught how to protect the land in Puna, in righteousness.
You're, right now, Google Earth, they're, they're just eating up the fines. That's what you're saying, John?
If people who illegally rub and grade, if people who illegally rub and grade.
More than is allowed without a permit. Basically, the fines are so low, if they are caught, if someone reports them. They write it off. I mean, it's just, it isn't sufficient to be, you know, it's, it's just part of doing business at this point because it's such a menini fine.
Sure, I'd use up your time.
That's simple. The fact that we're in the legislative branch, we just, we need to make sure that our laws has an effect, they won't just eat it up. So I would definitely up the fines.
Nothing if fines may solve the immediate apparent problem. However, there's a saying, the more laws, the less justice. It becomes more and more burdensome for governments to be enforcing all these laws. There needs to be an incentive to do something out of the grumming. And, you know, I mentioned beforehand, it's the economy. And we wouldn't be so, we wouldn't have people doing things to procure their destiny, because that's how they see it, if they had other means to do so. Okay, this is for the short minute, the compelling problem that I didn't get to mention is the solution to Fukushima. And that is a floating suit that creates value in this new much sewage. It's gonna get us all killed. Eighty-five times Chernobyl is sitting on reactor ports, gonna sink in the ocean.
Okay, so this is to me a two-part question. I absolutely support increasing the fines for illegal grading and grumming. And I'm looking over at Gregor saying, you got some more time in your council term. But I, I really cannot support the whole aerial mapping concept. I actually think we need to look on, look into some legislation about drones and quadcopters. I had the experience of using a quadcopter in Leilani Estates, if any of you lived there, that was me. And it was really strange to be able to see other people's neighborhoods and what was going on. I just, I, I feel like it's an invasion of our privacy, and we need to look out for that. There is a ballot that needs to take place. We need to be much more aggressive about grading and grumming and illegal Tommy for that matter. But let's be careful not to invade people's privacy.
I would definitely up the fine, but GPS, I don't think that's really an invasion when you're looking at a big broad map and catching the people. Because what are you gonna do, flyover every week? Oh, wait a minute, this guy's got this going and that going, and starts adding up to thousands of dollars. So if you do a GPS grid, it makes more sense. You can catch them faster. Thank you.
Well, we already know that it didn't work with green harvests. So I don't know what they're planning that they're gonna accomplish. So definitely not. It's a, it's a big, regardless of how the map looks, it's a huge invasion of your privacy. And how we do it is neighbor by neighbor. You see it happening, you gotta call somebody. You know, you, you know it's happening because that's your, your friend, you gotta call somebody regardless of that's your friend. Because the land is getting wiped out. So yeah, I'm definitely not in favor of the joints.
Spiritual and physical well-being of native Hawaiians ties them to the land and the sea. What would be your first priority in natural resources? How would you come up with a bill to tie us Hawaiians back to our land correctly? All I can say is, oh wait. One of the things that, just not with, with the Hawaiians, but with everybody. We need to start, aside from preserving the lands, to do marathons. I guess the thing is, is that if we do more parks and recreational areas, including saving our beaches, we can start having activities that incorporate using the, I'm losing it, I'm sorry. Aside from just surfing matches, there's more than that. There's creating hundred mile runs, or hundred mile walks. There's the canoeing in the regattas. We not, we need to start exploring more ways of how to reach into each of the communities to see what we can identify, where they can start to do their physical and spiritual beginnings. What I'm saying is that, like with Puna here, if you're not next to the beaches, how can you tell someone, okay, that's a joint of regatta? Well, how are they gonna get to the regatta? So it's just not just saying spiritual and physical. We also need to provide ways for them and a mentor to the areas that they need to explore their inner selves.
Aina and Kai. To, anything special, the question I understood was what kind of legislation? I would go for special funding, or as far as special funding to support established Puna volume on or aid Hawaiians to reconnect their culture. Especially the young kids, Kiki. So that's what I would do. Especially in designated areas that are recognized by Hawaiian community, because that's the ones that we know about. I really missed our Queens attitude there. I missed it so much. It's such a beautiful place, very special place.
Your priority as councilwoman, what would be your first priority to tie the Hawaiians back to their land and sea correctly or accurately? Because of so much things as a native recognition, everything is happening now. What would be one of the priorities that you would do when you reach into the county council? That you would build for our Hawaiians? For families?
So it's like, what would be your priority if it was me in the county council? Of course, I'll think of family, building areas such as a swimming area for them to raise fishes in aquaculture. Having a farm that would help bring in money, small businesses for young individuals, especially for high school students. It would help out small businesses so that families can start from high school how to be entrepreneurs, right from the beginning. So as soon as they graduate, they have some type of funding to get them where they need to go. Some examples.
Thank you for answering my question. Okay, that's it. She answered it, yeah. Thank you very much.
That was really good. I think it's great that the Department of Interior came and tried to turn the native Hawaiians into a tribe, and what they said was no way. We want to be speaking to the Secretary of State, John Kerry, and I think that's the way to go. But in terms of local Puna, so how many of you know there's a 57 acre park and it costs $20 million that we're gonna be paying for?
That's only one part of it.
Yeah, only one part of it, okay? Now, I have over there on the desk, I have some handouts with a plan of the park. Football fields, baseball fields, tennis field parks, basketball, such like that. And the question I ask is, where is the hale that is gonna be teaching Hawaiian cultural arts? Where is the hale that's gonna be teaching Hawaiian cultural arts? Because it's not on that plan. And I would ask our incumbent, where is the plan for the Hawaiian cultural arts?
This is a great question, because I've been working on the, you're, you're familiar with the 2% fund, the Open Space Fund? Right now, there has been zero dollars spent in Puna from that fund. It's all in Kona, Waimea, Hamakua, Kauai, anywhere above Puna. And we might be, I'm working on the Puhiki vacation land and the Gap property. We might be the first to actually spend it in Puna for the first time ever to preserve that land generation after generation. So that's what I'm doing. Thank you.
When I first came to the Big Island, I had great fortune to meet Uncle Sam, who's a Hawaiian gentleman that may, I would hope maybe he would be at this meeting tonight, because he's a very regular person. He was talking about Hawaiian culture and how the different elevations, what they had to offer, civilization in Hawaiians, and how they live from the ocean to the mountaintop, and they live going back and forth and utilizing the various resources that nature offers. And upon thinking about that, it was interesting, a bit of history is that Hawaii set the world record of 13 tons of high quality fiber hemp, a year before the overthrow of the Kingdom of Hawaii, establishing the Guinness World Record. And, you know, upon contemplation of all the Hawaiian people that I have met, had the great pleasure, favor of being able to be associated with these people that have lived here all their lives, and how they live, the aina, and how they think. The best thing we can do for improving Hawaiian culture, so what I told Uncle Sam, is that if I get elected and we can pass this ordinance, we're out of here. We'll make, give it back to the Hawaiians. The Hawaiian people are quite capable of establishing their own culture. Thank you.
So, this is much longer than one minute question, but Ohana is a central focus of Hawaiian culture, and communal living is very, very popular here in Puna. I would suggest that we amend our county code to consider the intentional communities that are here in Puna, including the many Hawaiian families that choose to live together on one parcel of land. And I would say that we have our subdivision code, if somebody wanted us to get, be legal according to Hawaii county standards, you would have to subdivide your land, and you wouldn't be able to put your catchment tank, you need a road with a 50-foot ride of way, all paved with the swales and the sidewalks. And none of that fits really well in rural Puna. And so we need to consider what, what, how people are choosing to live here. And they're choosing to live together, much like the Hawaiians have for, since they, since, you know, Polynesia. So it is Polynesian culture to, to live communally. We need to address that in the code.
Well, I moved here in 81, and I got to serve drain pipes. I also got to die with Sam and some of the other Hawaiians in Kamoa Moa. And seeing drain pipes in Lepoyd and that whole area devastated was, took me two years to even go to the dump. But I've talked to Sam, I've talked to Aku Haniyo, and they would love to have a park down there. A place where they could have canoes, kiki ponds, and other things. And Sam told me right out, I'm not waiting for you. Well, I wish he would, because that's my dream, to bring back Kalapana, at least so we could have parks down there. And that's one of the biggest Hawaiian communities that I know of, that were strong at one time, and I mean, they actually were so great to me. I mean, I can't express it. So anyways, thank you.
I agree with almost all of these people, almost. Some of the issues that we're having with tying the Hawaiians back to the land is that the United States seems to think they own it. My big issue with that is, I want legislation, I want the government to step up and give the Hawaiians back some of their land. We figured it out. If, if every Hawaiian was to get an acre of land, everyone here would still be able to keep their homes, everyone here would still be able to keep their farms, their property. There is so much land. And we don't want land that you gonna build one house on for us, that we gotta pay $320,000, $350,000 for. No, we want our aina, so we can build our hale the way we want to. So I wanna implement to legislation, not only from the county level, but So I want to implement to legislation, not only from the county level, but way, way up there, me and Obama need to have a talk. Yeah, getting the land back.
All right, about that. I think it's important that we understand what our powers are when we get into office. We do have some coercive powers, but more than that, we have the ability to do the fact-finding, to set up the committees. And as a councilperson, it's your district. And in getting to know the district, we know that four and five are going to have to work really closely together in order to get things done. I support the idea of putting myself out of a job. I support raising up and mentoring Hawaiians and them mentoring me so that we can arrive at being a proud nation, including all of us, and living a better way and determining our own agenda. I'm that way. So I'm looking forward to helping and accessing as many Hawaiians who want to tell me what to do. Thank you.
Okay, just want to make a quick announcement. So we're going to go till 8:15, so that gives us a chance to break everything down. And these will probably be the last questions from each of us. So what I'm going to do is going to squeeze two questions in. All I want is yes or no, okay? Because I have two very important questions left. My first question, okay, so we discussed the issue about if you have curbside pickup and you are willing to set aside your recyclables, the person who comes and picks it up is not allowed to take it down to the transfer station on your behalf. That's county policy. So just yes or no, would you support a provision that would allow, I don't want to say the word waste, oh, help me, that would help discard haulers take your recyclables to the transfer station and deposit them there in the recycling bin on your behalf? Would you support the county policy that would allow that? Yes or no?
So no words, just yes or no? I'll hold the mic.
I do that all the time for my friends. Yeah.
Yes.
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 What was the question?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, my second question is, this takes a little bit of background. So there's something that goes on with the county. They have a program called Grants in Aid. And this is, they give out money, different, it's mostly nonprofits, but I think maybe any organization can come down. It's usually a small amount of money. And they come down and they say, okay, you know, this is our idea and can you give us some money to help it? And a lot of those people or organizations seeking grants are events. So, you know, you're going to have an event, you're going to have a parade or something. You go down to the county and you say, okay, can you throw in a little bit of money to help us? So I do a lot of zero-waste events and I also know something about the Grants in Aid program and I know it's very competitive. And I wonder if you would be willing, as county counselors, as part of a policy, to up the ante in the competition for these Grants in Aid funds and require that anyone who is looking for money, looking for a grant in aid to help an event, require that that event be staged as zero-waste? And if anybody has a question about what zero-waste is, I could answer it. I mean, it's basically, we're not saying that they, you can't take anything to the landfill, but you're going to plan to reduce the amount of waste that's generated to the furthest extent you possibly could. I do a lot of, like I said, zero-waste events and we often get 95%, 99%. We just did Uncle Roberts one day and we had a 99.65% diversion rate. So it's possible. Would you be willing to mandate that?
Yes, no?
No, it's not a yes or no.
Yes, it is.
It's yes.
Yes. This is to support any event to be zero-waste if it's a nonprofit. It runs for a badge.
I think we have a few words.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Yes.
Yes, and I would take it a step farther. I'd like the county to implement procurement only for recyclable stuff from now on.
One of the reasons why they're asking for money is because they're short on money. And one of the things that I would do is take it case by case and really look into what their events are. And you can discuss it with them and I'm pretty sure they would actually go with it to try to get the funding.
Yes or no?
It depends on the circuit. Yes.
Yes, and I also agree with Roy Lazzano, but I think that the county should be a model for zero-waste.
Yes, yes.
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 I agree in trying to go to zero-waste in making it a consideration or requirement for funding. If all things being equal, I would give the person going with zero-waste, yeah.
Okay. Little history. In the mid-'70s, the state legislature mandated that the counties do a general planning process. Those general planning processes were to be based upon community development plans. The county produced basically three general plans between the beginning of that process and to the point at which Harry Kim came into office, but never did any community development planning. So Harry was the first one to fund in this county the community development process. Just recently, the council was asked to delay the general plan process, give the planning department more time to complete one, quite a bit of time. Our concern is that the general plan, if it can be delayed, could be delayed nearly indefinitely. And by virtue of that, they would also delay the community development planning process. Would you support legislation and/or referendum that would mandate the county and county ordinance, complete a general plan every 10 years as is mandated or apparently not exactly mandated, but mandated under state law and the community development planning process that goes with it, keeping in mind that that would include the funding to guarantee it?
Yes or no?
Yes or no, okay. We're out of time.
Yes.
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 And that includes hemp too, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes again.
Yes.
All right. I'm just going to say mahalo to all of you and all of you who attended here. So I wanted to let you folks know, good luck to all of you. And please, find it in your hearts for all of you to work together because Puna is all about Ohana, family, and aloha and love. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Puna. It was so very good to come and do our first forum here. We enjoyed ourselves very much. And before we wrap it up, we have just two questions that came in from the audience.
There are quite a few more.
Oh, there's more?
Yeah.
Well, we don't have time, but I'm going to, here's one that's very easily answered. District Five, show of hands, will you utilize the Pahoa County Council office for your District Five constituents? Show of hands. The office, okay. All right.
Sorry, what are you asking, exactly?
Okay, the question, it came in from somebody in the audience. Will you utilize the Pahoa County Council office for your District Five constituents? So I guess that's where Gregor is now, right? But they would be District Five, so I guess the idea is sharing that office? No? Who asked this question?
I did. Because I finally got to talk to Zendo and we had a two-hour intercourse and I'll tell you what, it went on in his office, it took me three months, but we talked for two hours and we got a lot of things done. I hope the District Five new councilperson will do the same. Thank you.
Okay, there you go. All right, so that's the time that we have to...
Everybody that put in a question, put their name on it. We're going to, through Recycle Hawaiians Sierra, we're going to forward it to the commissioner specifically or in general, and then we'll get the answer back. If your name is on here, you'll get the answer back also, okay? If you didn't put your name and contact information on there and you still want to do it, I've got them here and you can do it. Sorry, we didn't have enough time tonight, but we knew we had a lot of questions.
Okay, so before, before everyone leaves, oh, hang on. We had a request to allow the candidates to do a one-minute closing statement. Are you up for that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so thank you again very much. I'm glad that everyone made it here safely and I am certain that you are all going to arrive at home safely. And anyone that wants to hang out and talk story in the atrium, you're welcome to do that, but I need to tell you, they lock the gates at 10 o'clock. Okay, so here we go for the closing statements. Thank you very much to all the candidates for coming. Thank you, audience.
Thank you, Julia, John, Christine. Thank you all. That's ready. Thank you, Gregor, for being here. Thank you all, the audience. I hope you enjoyed yourself. I did, even though they didn't want to give me the mic, but I did. They answered my question, so I had fun. So, but I all want to say, please, vote August 9th for the primary. Get your friends to vote. Have everybody vote. It's so important that we vote. Good night and aloha.
There's going to be a lot of challenging issues coming up in this next council. I'm going to do the Hawaiian thing again. Onipaha, onipaha. You know what that is? No, no, ipono paha. That is the motto of Queen Lily O'Kolani, stand firm. That's what we're asking. We're asking our council members, whoever they turn out to be, is to stand firm on the issues. We have a tough administration who likes to make things happen their way. And whoever you elect has to be firm in the aina, have to be firm in the Ohana, will not be pushed down and away and said, no. You got to be able to say, no, this is what I believe and this is the way it is and that's how I'm going to do it, even if you lose. Stand firm.
Thank you, everyone, for coming. And I just want to make this as short as possible so everybody can go. And I just want to say, drive safe and aloha.
Think global, act local. We can establish our own destiny procuring a cannabis economy. If nothing else, we would be a whole lot better off than we are. I'm legislating this ordinance. It's entitled "The Solution to the Disregard of the Lowest Law Enforcement Priority for Cannabis Ordinance." It was voted in by the people and we need to move on that. Thank you.
I just want to thank all of you for being here tonight and also just for participating in government because there's 4,000 people in Council District Five and approximately that many people in District Four who show up to the polls and vote. So your vote really does count. And if you could encourage your friends and neighbors to grab a voter registration, they have till July 10th to register. And over there, there's a Hunt for Puna button, recycled buttons that I found at a yard sale. Please go grab one. Grab a flyer. I'm having a July 18th roast for Puna and you're all invited, Aki Bono Theater. Aloha.
Thank you very much for coming. I agree, you should get out and vote, tell your friends, and I'm a strong supporter on voting. A lot of people think it's just a waste of time, but it's, you don't have any rights if you don't vote. Thank you very much.
Mahalo to all of you for coming this evening. It just amazes me how from the last forum to this forum, I look around and I see the same people. So what I want to encourage you to do is to get out and let your friends know, your families know, when we have these events, because it's important. I've gone to five different subdivisions and none of them even knew we've had a forum already, you know? And they, they're concerned about the issues as you are. So let's step out of our comfort zone and tell a friend, tell a few friends, tell your neighbor who may not even be your friend when the forums are, because they're important. And if you're so concerned about it and there's 100 of you and there's 4,000 to 5,000 people who vote, who know nothing about the person they're voting for, that scares me to death, you know? So our biggest thing is to get out there, let the people know you, let them have a face to see with your sign, who's Cherish? Oh, Cherish shows up at my door. So very good. You, but please, encourage them, when you know there's a forum, encourage them to come and meet us. Mahalo.
I want everybody in the District Five, who, who, raise your hands. All right, that's a good representation of the people here tonight. I want to thank you all for coming. And what I want to say is this, my father has a saying, and he meets people, he's the man on the corner, I'd like to share it with you and you can repeat after me if you like. We, the unwilling, who have been led by the unqualified, have been due with the unbelievable for so long, with so little, we now attempt to do the impossible with nothing. And that's what we have a whole lot of, and let's get busy working on it. Thank you.
I want to thank everybody. And one of the important things, we're actually in a crisis. You really need to get everybody out there to know that this is the last, this island is the last stand to preserve it the way it should be, as the Hawaiians have done for centuries when they first came. They are the leaders on how to preserve this land. If we start, if, if all you have to do is look at what's happened to Oahu, what's happened to Kauai, what's happened to Maui, we need to put the brakes down now. That's why whoever you decide to vote for, let they have the courage to stand tall with the principles that they will never betray the aina.
You know, I agree with her 100%. You know, talk is cheap for me, you know? You got to practice what you preach, yeah? You know? Replant core trees again in my yard. They tell me never going to grow over there. You're crazy. Stay growing, stay about 30 feet high. You know what I mean? No, fucker. Of course, you plant all your native stuff. For me, as a Hawaiian, it's very important. For me, as a Hawaiian, it's very important to have me have that connection to my aina. Yeah? So, talk is cheap. When you really say you green, Hawaiians knew what is green. When they first came here, they couldn't believe what they saw. The lois, the thousands of people, yeah? All taking care of. Don't come around, you know, nobody should come around and say, "Hey, you know, we're doing this. We're going to do that." Talk is cheap. Practice what you preach. I want to thank Sierra Club, Sister Pali O'Kolani, Recycle Hawaii. And I promise you one thing, I never going to nail my sign to a tree.
Okay, thanks again. One quick announcement, there's going to be video of what happened tonight, and you can share with friends who couldn't make it. So, can some of the people that are videoing give an announcement about...
Aloha, y'all. Most of you know my channel, yeah? OccupyHawaiian on YouTube will have the whole thing. That's Ross Armeta over there, from Hawaii Political Reporter. Ms. Sativa down here, she's also got the whole entire thing too. And their channel is Mission Possible. And TV, Mission Possible TV. And are you posting anywhere for anybody?
Yes, on YouTube.
On YouTube? Do you have a channel name?
Well, it's under the name, I'll put District 4 and District 5.
So, search District 4, District 5, Forum. Stay away from the monitor. Aloha, y'all. Thank you.
Mahalo, all of you. Best show in town. Best show.